We call this regular meeting to order call roll.
Mayor Querom.
Here.
Councilmember Swanson.
Here.
Mabry.
Here.
Gomez.
Here.
Newman.
Here. Please stand and join us, plenipotently.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we get started tonight under public comment. We're going to start out with a presentation from the Lions Club. And Scott, I don't know if you want to come up, or do you have somebody that wants to... We just need for you, for the record and for the video, say your names. It should be on.
Turn the light, on the top of the microphone, there's a button.
Yeah, it should be, it should be on. I had to turn it off.
Testing.
Nope.
Just push it down until it turns on. You see the button? The button, Jim, the button.
The button? Where's the button?
In the middle of the shaft, on the very top.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
I found the button. Your name? My name is Jim Argle. Name and address?
No, just name.
A member of the Princeton Lions Club. Nice, we're here to talk a little bit about the Veterans Park. And Scott Smith is handing out brochure, a little more about what Lions are. We're finding as we become a club that's been in the area for a lot longer time, we're less known as new people come into the city. And we've been in the community for 96 years as an organization, and we are celebrating while we will. I've been working on several different things in the community, and you can read about those. Our main purpose is we serve, and we want to serve the community the best we can. We've been working with the Veterans Park for a good 10 years now. The city came to us and asked if we would help maintain it. We've been doing that. Probably seen us out there, probably four or five times a year, just hauling and weeding. There's a lot of stuff in there. And so we're kind of wanting to look at redoing some of the log events, put in different things to make it a lower maintenance type of park. One of the things we run into, excuse me, is there are several parks in the city. There's county parks, there's state parks, and there's park district parks. And we're kind of looking for some guidelines as to things that we can do or can't do. So as of tonight, I know Scott has some things to present to you, and we would like to get ideas from you and see how we can collaborate this project together. So this time I will turn over to Scott. Good evening. Scott Smith, Princeton Lions Club. Parks become a kind of a thorn in our side some days when you're rounding up to work on them. I asked David Hornbaker to come take a look at it, give me a professional opinion. His opinion was, is the picture there in front of you. To downsize the plants, we have way too many types of flowering plants, roses, et cetera, grasses, too tall grasses. He talked about planting some trees. Josh Taylor talked about planting some trees with the city. That's when I said, well, we better go to the city council. What we're really looking for is one commissioner, even one of the new guys, to volunteer to be our liaison for Veterans Park. In four years, we turned 100 years old, one of the oldest in the world. We've been here in Princeton. Just our club. And that's huge. We want to have it done right now. We want to have some kind of ceremony. So I know it's been a tough year as far as budgets go on everybody, including the Lions Club, but we just want everybody to get on the same page, and we can talk to hopefully a commissioner, show them what we want to do, see what the city wants to do. What's on the ticket table up there? I know the veterans here in Princeton are going to redo the flagpoles, and that's going to help out quite a bit right there in the middle of it. So we don't want to plant any trees in front of that. So we can all get on the same page with them, too. So if you have any questions, you know how to get ahold of me, or Jim, we'd be glad to help you out. And if you guys are hungry tomorrow night, or at Culvers, doing a fundraiser, some of that money, go to the park. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Scott and Jim. And you know, you guys have done a great job across the street, and all the projects we do for the city of Princeton, so we will, we'll get together with you.
So you know, like, the city, water department, street department, they've been helping us, you know, many commissioners, different things, you know, different people, different clubs, the American Legion guys have been a big part of it. So we thought we better come together so we don't hurt anybody's feelings, doing something wrong, or have to redo it three times. Know that, you know, what's going on up there. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next on the public comment, we have quite a crowd here tonight. I think it's on the mobile food vendor issue. So I'm assuming that we have quite a few people that like to speak. I'd like to say a couple of things before we get started on the, because there seems to be a misconception that the city has, has been wanting to either keep food vendors out of town, or ban them altogether, and that simply is not the, simply is not the case, never has been. That discussion's never occurred with the city, as far as I know. So, you know, we will have food trucks. The primary issue that we're dealing with is not so much on the private property of businesses in the business districts. They can have food trucks. It's private property. It's whether we put the food trucks on public property, which is the issue. So that's what we're addressing. We addressed it two weeks ago. We address it here again tonight. So we'll go through this. And first of all, before we get started, you guys at the Lions Club, if you want to, you don't have to stick around if you want. If you want, you can leave, or you can stick around. That's up to you. And then when we get done with the discussion here on the mobile vendor units, then we can, we can dismiss anybody that would like to leave at that point as well. Okay? So started off tonight, I think Nick wanted to speak initially, so I'll bring you up. Everybody that comes up to speak, and all you do, all you need to do is take your name, and then go for it.
Hey, everybody. I'm Nick with Barrel Society on the north end of town, for those who haven't met me. A pleasure to see everybody out here. I just want to start off, and I want to say thank you to everybody that has supported us and continues to support us over the past, just over two years that we've been in business, especially in the past year and a couple of months since COVID had started. I also want to say thanks to our fellow local business owners that have come out as well, and especially those that appreciate the food trucks and see that what we're doing is in fact creating more business for everybody in this town. Also want to say in particular, thank you to all the city council members for giving everybody here in this room a chance to have their voices heard. Very important. I'm going to start off on the topic of community, guys. Barrel Society was founded on the idea of community. When I was coming up with the name for this bar, I came up with the term society because of how much community and family means to me. And we want to continue to provide these options that we are providing to people in town and for our community, because everybody's enjoying them so much. Topic of tourism is very big in this town as well. We're bringing people from dozens and sometimes hundreds of miles to come and visit Barrel Society and visit the city of Princeton in general. And they're not only spending their money at Barrel Society and at the vendors that we contract out here. They're going to dozens of places in town. They're, they're going up and down Main Street from the north end all the way down to the south and see what the city has to offer. And it's a pretty amazing sight. I would also like to take some time to commend some of my fellow local business owners. I don't think there's anybody from Park Tavern here, but I, where are we at? I guess. Fantastic job during COVID, guys. I can't applaud you more. You guys, you guys killed it during COVID. Los Rancitos, nobody's here from Los Rancitos. Sally from Flower House, thank you. You guys did a fantastic job during COVID. Is everybody from Spoons here? Guys, your recent menu additions, fantastic. It is amazing. Exactly what the community wants to see. I applaud you. Very welcome. I want to step back a little bit to COVID. In March of 2020, when it all started, this was a very difficult, very difficult year for all of us. My condolences to anybody in this room that lost a friend, family member, or even a business in the past year. At the beginning of COVID, Barrel Society and all business owners, we were faced with some pretty difficult options. Do we adapt, or do we overcome? Or do we fall victim to a pandemic that still seemingly really has no end in sight? Barrel Society chose to adapt immediately, through relentless marketing, a completely revamped business model that we focused on strictly on carryout. Through that, we also were doing collaborations with local businesses. Blue Jayway Records, whose sales have increased dramatically because of the collaborations and support we have given them and the customers that are coming to visit us, which are in turn visiting them. Paizanos Pizza, business is booming right now. There's a Barrel Society pizza on the menu. It's fantastic to have these kind of relationships with local business owners in this area, and just in all over the place in town. Throughout COVID, we were donating all of our tips that we received from all of our carryout purchases directly to our staff members who were not working at that time to keep them afloat. Throughout that time, up until now, we graced three local newspaper covers, as well as one local magazine cover, as well, which is also attracting people to our community. Jocelyn, one of my food members, food vendors, she started off cooking on our sidewalk, right in front. We would set up our Barrel Society tent, she would set up a flat top grill with a couple of coolers, and she would cook right there. Her, her husband, and her daughter recently purchased a food truck, a full-size operational food truck that they drive all the way out from Bridgeport, which is a South Chicago suburb, to here every weekend, sometimes two times a week. That is pretty much, in my opinion, the American dream, right there. It's really, it's a beautiful thing, and I really suggest you guys come out and support them if you have the chance. Back to COVID. By adapting and persevering, we were able to add a patio behind Barrel Society. We were able to add a bottle shop to focus the massive amount of carryouts that we were having from inside the bar. And we were also able to add new interior and exterior murals to our building as well, for the community to enjoy. I would also like to note that every, every food vendor that we have, Flo's, Sharon is here from Flo's on Pulaski, Jocelyn from La Catrina, also Clay, who I believe already is, all, all of these vendors are planning on, or already have, joined the Princeton Chamber of Commerce. They love doing business in this town so much and appreciate the community support, that they want to establish a name and a mainstay here, even if they are not brick and mortar, which in, in my opinion, is, is pretty amazing. With everything I just kind of noted, noted here during COVID, Barrel Society was very creative, and we chose to make the pass on a very terrible and unfortunate situation that all of us had to deal with. With all that said, food trucks need to remain directly in front of Barrel Society and should not be limited due to the proximity of competitive business, nor should they be restricted in frequency. Today's modern world of business and marketing, people need to remain competitive and better than fresh. We believe that Princeton community deserves nothing but the best, and we're going to continue to give them that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So who's next? Just keep your name, is all.
Hi, I'm Jim Lully. I'm here strictly for Nick. My only concern is the one in front of his. I know you have trucks all over town, but that's the only one that really concerns me is the one in front of his business. I'm worried the city will make a mistake and take away at the truck. Nick has a very specialty business. People come from all over the state to go there, and part of the fun of going there is the different food trucks he has up there. And I really don't think that that makes much difference at all to other businesses, what the food trucks sell them. I don't think that most of the people, I mean, most of the other places have great businesses, but I just can't see it making much difference. As far as I heard last time, that they, some people got up and said, well, these food trucks aren't brick and mortar. Well, one that goes in front of his place, he pays all the fees there. Spooners pays 34, 31 a year in property taxes. Oriental Gardens pays 32, 94, but Barrel House pays 47,000. So he does contribute a lot of money to the city. And we've got a kitchen there, we've got trucks out in the street. I just, what he's done at Barrel, I don't know how many of you have been in there, but it's just fantastic. I think he should get some type of award for what he's done there. The screens and all the different mirrors. His days off, he runs all over breweries, all over where contacts he's had when he lived in Chicago, bringing out specialty stuff, and he drives people all over the state. I think it's the type of business Princeton really needs. So with him paying, you know, what he pays in property tax, people say, well, they don't pay the, the Princeton sales tax. Well, I don't know what that is, but if it's half a percent on $300 a night, that's a dollar fifty. But he pays all the other taxes. I just, I can't say enough good about this guy, and I totally support him.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Anybody else?
I'm Sally Jane. I'm the owner operator of Flower House Bakery. I'm here today to support the mobile food vendors in Princeton, and in hopes that this ordinance will also create a fair system for both the vendors and the brick and mortar businesses. I've read the ordinance, and I agree with most all of it, although I do have a perspective on the Homestead Festival restriction that I would like to share. Homestead Weekend is a huge, huge weekend for our business, although we have always been extremely overwhelmed due to the fact that our town swells in population during the festival, and we are not exactly equipped to handle that influx, especially now that Cafe 420 is closed. Therefore, I would be more than happy to share that this influx with mobile food vendors. Don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting that I do not appreciate this influx. I'm just acknowledging that, you know, the realities of our limits. We are a small batch bakery with a small employee base, and we have always struggled to meet the demand of Homestead. It is my opinion that for the weekend of the Homestead Festival, we have plenty of business to go around in all regards, and therefore we do not need to restrict the mobile food vendors that weekend. Now, I know that we're not restricting mobile food vendors altogether, yet there's still some pushback, and therefore I would like to posit a couple of general arguments for mobile food vendors. As part of a capitalistic economy, competition is inherent. Therefore, we should not be complaining of competition. We should be trusting in our businesses, and if need be, innovating in order to compete. Second, sometimes, mobile food trucks act as a business incubator, excuse me, and could potentially lead to certain food trucks evolving into brick and mortar businesses. And we should all be in support of that idea, because variety is a spice of life, and will bring more customers to our town, and in turn grow Princeton. Lastly, I hope you will oblige me by allowing this opinion. There's been much back and forth on the social media outlet, Facebook, surrounding around this topic and many other town issues. I sincerely appreciate Mr. Mayor, your transparency and accessibility, although many of your posts do allow for feedback that seem to, a lot of the time, snowball and lead our community into unnecessary negative chatter. I would love for you to consider containing the post about city issues, yet maybe disarm the commenting, and suggest that if anyone has strong opinions on matters, they contact the council for yourself, or yourself, sorry, directly, or participate in city council meetings. Facebook is not the appropriate place for discussion, and I truly believe that it spreads mass amounts of misinformation and mass amounts of negativity that is not good for our town morale.
I agree with you on that. The comments that I read, that I read, not only on mine, but on others, just negativity and the bashing, it's just, it's incredible, and it's unfortunate, and it's embarrassing. So, yeah.
Yeah. And I know it won't, you know, entirely stop, just, you know, if you take comments down, there's plenty of space on Facebook, but I just, you know, I just feel like if people truly have something they are really passionate about, they will come to these meetings, and they will look you in the face and they will say...
And they should come to the meetings. So this is the way it should be every, every council member.
Yeah. So anyway, thank you for your time and consideration.
I do. Anyone?
Hi, I'm Karen Townsend from Downtown Pub. And I think, I'm just going to speak for a minute from the brick and mortars. I'm friends with lots of people that are doing business and are selling food. And most of us, we don't have a problem with food trucks. We felt that there were issues with the cost, and to make it fair for all of us. Lots of us are doing everything we can to grow and be something different. We're adding a restaurant inside ours, the last thing I wanted to do, but we have to grow. We have to, we have to continue. So I'm thankful for all of you that are like paying attention to this and giving us all the option to say, I'm not against competition. I actually, we have been doing business in Princeton for 21 years, and I actually swear to God, when we sold our last business in Princeton, I would never be in Princeton again for this very reason right now. And here I am, right in the midst of it again, and it does not have to be like this. We all work hard, and we all really care about our businesses. We care about our friends that are right next door, and we want them all to succeed. So to have the idea out there that just because I have a building, I'm against your food trucks, I'm not against your food trucks. I, I just wanted to be fair. We all work our asses off. There's a tiny little bit out there that we're all just trying to survive. So thank you. Thank you for giving us all the opportunity to, to voice our concerns. And, but I mean, as far as my brick and mortar, I'm not opposed to the food trucks, never have been. All of my friends that own brick and mortars, which is pretty much all the restaurants in town, we're not against them. We just wanted to be fair. We wanted to make sense to all of us so that we all have a chance. If I only had to go to work two days a week, my God, I would love that. So that's, that's what we're all struggling with, is how do you make it fair for all of us? It's great that we get the chance to have different places come into town, and everybody gets to go to those. That's a beautiful thing. But it's just the figuring it out, and faithfully, I'm not in your shoes. I don't have to do it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. It is a balancing act. I mean, there's no question about it. You know, it may all come down to trial and error as well, you know, trying to get this right. And it may take a while to get this right. And that's what this whole thing is about. I said this two weeks ago, I'll say it again tonight. This is what these issues are all about, is bringing the community together and getting people to speak passionately about what they feel. And that's what you're doing. And so we all appear appreciative. It's going to help us make the decision as we go forward. We have two council members sitting in the house, or future council members sitting in the audience tonight, and it's going to be part of this decision. So it's a, you know, it's, it's a challenge, but you know, we will get there. And you know, one thing that I would ask everybody is to be patient. Be patient with us, and be, be patient with the process as we work through this thing. So when we come out with an ordinance, it may, it may change, you know, over time, and it could change over a short time. But you know, we are going to be diligent about it and try our best to do the, to do the right thing. Right off the bat, we can. So, anybody else?
Hi, I'm Sharon from Flo's. I think I'm the only food truck owner here tonight. The last year has been hell for everybody. We were one of the businesses who chose to stay closed because of different employees who have different issues they have at home with family members, and I listened to them. I am fortunate enough where I didn't lose one employee. Between the new innovations that we come up with, we, the girls worked their asses off. We did curbside, and we would be lined up down the blocks. And some people would move up, and some people would stay there and make the girls run to them. It was, it's just been a tough year. We started a food truck a couple of years ago, because people were interested in our food doing events. And next, last year, it took kind of a new role, where people couldn't want, didn't want to go out, they didn't want to go into buildings, and food trucks are more safe, because you can go up, everybody keeps their distance, and you're not inside a building. So people feel safer, and we respect that. And food trucks, they're going to blow up. They're, I mean, they're not going away. It's like, everybody has to adapt to the new norm, and I think we've done pretty well. And last year, when this all started, I posted on Facebook, because we already did a carryout and a delivery service. And it's not as easy as what you say. You think it'd be simple, but it's not. I offered any business owner any advice that I could help them. And I was open to whoever has my Facebook. I have 11,000 followers on my Facebook. Not one business owner messaged me. And it's like, I can't do more than that. We donate to the community. We donate to any communities where our truck goes. We support communities because that's what we are. That's how I built my business. Jay, or Nick talked to me about Jay, and we were all in. We donated $2 from every tender line, actually for the whole month, and we were there the rest of the month. And I think we donated between everybody close to $4,000 for a community that we don't live in, but a community we support. And we do that everywhere. I don't generally turn anybody down, because if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't have my business, either my brick and mortar or my food truck. And like I told my employees, we are so grateful for all the support we've been given. And it is new waters for everybody, because nobody really knows how to balance it. So I've been helping other communities balance, because we get a lot of phone calls. Communities want us to come. We get it from the city. They want us to come. And we're not, our intention's not to hurt anybody's business. We want to help Princeton grow. And we have a food truck following where, when we're in Princeton, these people come from all over to come see us in Princeton. So they not only spend money with me, they're stopping at gas stations, they're stopping at other restaurants, they're shopping in Princeton. And that's a huge plus. We shop in Princeton. We need gas, we fill up in gas every time we leave. There's a big stigma about sales tax. And I don't think anybody really quite understands how it goes. Princeton pays 8% sales tax. The state of Illinois will take 6.5%. So the other 1.5% goes to Princeton. So my accountant has me registered with every town that we're in. I have the paperwork I brought with me, if anybody wants to see it, where at the end of the month, I give her my numbers for the whole month of where I was. She bases the sales tax that I paid, and that's where it goes, to that town. And I know Princeton, I think we were there maybe eight, 10 times last month. So I mean, and if people realize 1.5%, really isn't a whole lot of sales tax.
It's 1.75, I think.
Oh, is it? Oh, they say up there.
Not per pennies.
But yeah, but still, if, I mean, I think most people think they're getting the 8%, but we live in the state of Illinois, so that takes care of that. And, and you guys all watch the Facebook posts. They're cruel. They're absolutely cruel. We got referred to as a roach motel. That would hurt. I'm sorry. We are probably one of the cleanest. We're certified by every county that we're in. My employees, all my employees are certified. In La Salle County, with, for the state's sanitation, there's not one other business that has every employee certified, but we do. And I take so much pride in that, because that is important. We're not, like I said, we're not here to hurt anybody. We just want to help everybody grow. Because if we grow, you guys grow. And it's like, we all have to stick together, otherwise we're not going to make it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Carla Pascal. I lived in Princeton from 1983 until 1998. Moved a while for, moved away for... for awhile, moved away for awhile and I came back February fourteenth of twenty twenty and then COVID hit us in March. Um, one of the things I was concerned about coming back to Princeton was the variety of, you know, food and um barbs, you know, my choices there. I lived in larger communities, worked in larger communities. And while I liked Princeton, I came back for family, I was a little concerned about that. I do patronize all of the restaurants, Brick and Mortar and um also Nick, I've only gone to the food, food trucks a couple of times. Um, one of the things I'm amazed about Beryl Society though is their ingenuity. Um, their marketing really took an upturn when COVID hit. They've attracted um attention from people in the suburbs, I have a lot of friends in the suburbs and they all follow his Facebook and Instagram pages. Kind of made Princeton an attractive place for people to come. Um, I actually, I don't really go out right now because of the situation, but during the summer I did go into Beryl Society quite a bit, met a lot of people from, you know, Chicago, um, a lot of people come from Lee and Whiteside County. Um, I know there's a gentleman that comes from Peoria on a regular basis because of the bourbon. So I think his establishment is bringing people to town that you wouldn't normally have here and I do think they visit other businesses. But I think residents like myself, we like variety. I like to pre, patronize most of the restaurants in town, I mean, there's just some food that you just really don't like and maybe you won't, you know, visit that restaurant. But I think we do need a choice, especially now when we're limited to the number of people that can go into restaurants, the carryout that these businesses can support. And I just think, you know, the food trucks are just gonna help business as a whole. I think it's not gonna limit anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Ken Meacham. Um, feel extremely lucky to call Nick a friend, uh, work with him, did some things for his bottle shop with our working business. I think it's very clear from the comments tonight that the food trucks and Nick's business are feeling somewhat threatened by this ordinance. And I don't think that as a city, as a mayor, that's what we're trying to do, obviously. You've said it, you said it here, we're not trying to hurt anybody. Um, so I, I just really hope we look um hard at this ordinance and how it's written so we are not hurting one of our star businesses in town. And that's all I'll say.
You know, we don't, we don't currently have an ordinance, we do have a draft ordinance. Uh, that draft ordinance will not be the ordinance, uh, when we do come to it. So, you know, uh, nobody on the city that I know of has talked about anything specific as far as what this ordinance is gonna be, other than where are we going to allow food trucks on public property. So that decision has not been made, so if we go forward, listening to everybody and again, that's what this is all about, so. Um, just to give you some idea how this is gonna work, uh, when we do have our ordinance complete, the council's gonna work on this, um, what happens, and this could happen, uh, it could happen at our next meeting, that, you know, our ordinance is gonna have to go through two readings. So we will have a meeting, we will present the ordinance and then it will be voted on. If it gets three votes, it passes on to the second reading. The second reading and final reading will occur two weeks later. So in between the first reading and the second reading, there could still be further comment, won't be in the meeting because we won't have a meeting, but uh, you know, we, all of us are con, all of us can be contacted on the, on the city council. The ordinance will be made public prior to that first reading so everybody can look at it, they can read it, they can see what it's about, they can see what we're gonna be voting on. Um, so we'll go through two key, two, two readings and after that second reading, if it passes, collects three votes, then it, then becomes basically state law. So that's how the, that's how the process works. Like I say, the first reading of this ordinance could occur two weeks from tonight or it could occur four weeks from tonight. We don't know that yet. So that's kind of where it is right now, so. Anybody else with comments?
Could, just a one question. And the draft ordinance, I thought I read were, it would, could only go until eight o'clock at night? I wonder how late, how late you go now?
We try to, we try to follow what they put.
Okay, I'm impressed.
Yeah, and again, the draft ordinance, that's not gonna be the ordinance. There's a lot in that draft ordinance that's not gonna be or will be changed in the ordinance that we actually address and vote for, so. But the draft ordinance does give you an idea of what we're looking at or, you know, what we've been grappling with, so.
How are you gonna determine the cost of a food truck per year or a food vendor?
You know, we looked at a, a lot of ordinances that other cities and communities have, not only in Illinois, but in other states, to try to get what's fair and I, you know, it's, that's a difficult, uh, that's a difficult process to go through.
It is.
So, you know, and it may not be a one single fee for a year. It might be, we might, we might, we might give a daily fee, we might give a three month or a six month uh firm fee consecutively or we might, in, in a year, we don't know. So, I mean, that's all kind of what we're working towards. It's, again, it could be trial and error, but we're gonna, you know, try to be as fair as we can about it.
Because I know with, Ottawa, I pay two hundred dollars a year. Um, Peru, I pay twenty-five dollars a month. When we go, we just came from Walnut tonight, night, we paid twenty-five for the month. So I mean, that's pretty much like what the norm is. It's not, people think they need to, that we make a fortune, but we don't. Um, we love what we do, it's like, if anybody's in the brick and mortar, you realize, people have gotten need. And I mean, you've seen it on Facebook, people, I mean, in general have gotten need. And it's like, the girls that work on the food truck, it's like such a relaxing, because people are so appreciative. They tell you, please, thank you. And in the restaurant, in the brick and mortars, you don't get a lot of that anymore. And it's just, the phone does it right. That's like the biggie. And it's just so com, and it's enjoyable, because you get to meet so many people from everywhere. And it's like, that's one of the big positives of it. And you make friends, I mean, we have friends all over three counties right now that come see us when they know we're in town. We had an older couple today who lived in Peru, they drove all the way to Walnut to see us. And they bought gas there, they went, I think they went to the hardware store there too. So I mean, it's not just us, it's, they're spending money everywhere.
Anybody else like to step to the mic? Anyone? One once? One twice? Alright, so we'll go ahead and close the, uh, well, actually, I should ask, does anybody else have any public comment on any other issue? You know, the city. Okay. So we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. Appreciate everybody coming out and appreciate everybody speaking and, and lending an ear and uh, it was a very good meeting two weeks ago on this issue, it was a very good meeting tonight, it gives us a lot of information going forward and again, be patient with us, you know, we wanna get this right, it is a very, you know, admittedly, it's a divisive issue, you know, in the city as far as where trucks go on public property, but uh, we'll work through it and, you know, we'll get it right. It may take a while, but we will get it right. So anybody would like to leave, you don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting, I'll give you a couple minutes to exit right. Okay then, so we'll go ahead and move on to uh, the approval minutes and Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor, I approve the minutes from our regular council meeting on April fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll?
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'll go to approval invoices, City Clerk Nelson. I should say, and I should have mentioned this earlier, we do have one more public comment period at the end of the meeting, so, you know, you'll be able to speak again if you like.
Uh, for this period, in the Department of Accounts and Finances, we have uh invoices totaling one hundred four thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars and fifty cents. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling seventy-five thousand, nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and fourteen cents. In the Department of Public Safety, we have uh invoices totaling one hundred sixty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling nine hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and nine cents. Mayor, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices and now are submitted for disposition.
I approve the invoices as presented.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll?
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Now I'll go to regular business and City Clerk Nelson.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty-one dash double oh nine. This is an ordinance amending uh the Bureau Putnam Enterprise Zone. Um, this is the second and final reading and as you recall, oh, nevermind, I'll, I'll just uh wait for that, the uh, move to the second one, I guess. Oh, Mayor, that uh, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it's submitted for disposition.
I approve ordinance O dash two-one dash zero-zero-nine.
Second.
Motion's been second, uh, comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, to remind people that this is really uh, uh, an amendment to the enterprise zone to allow for some uh maintenance and some upgrades to the wind farm between Wyonett and Tiscua where uh some turbines will be upgraded uh for greater from capacity, other turbines will be removed uh permanently and uh you get a handful of additional turbines will be added uh to new locations. So that's all this really entails. Uh, because we are part of the Bureau Putnam Enterprise Zone, uh, we as a member city has to approve uh this amendment just like all the other member cities do.
Okay, anybody questions and comments? Motion has been second. Call roll?
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty-one dash oh-one-oh. This is an ordinance amending ambulance rates. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I approve ordinance O dash two-one dash zero-one-zero.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll?
I will mention that this is the second and final reading and therefore, uh, Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty-one dash oh-one-one. This is the ordinance amending city code establishing vehicle speed limits. Uh, Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I approve ordinance O dash two-one dash zero-one-one.
Second.
Motion's been second, this is for uh, Park Place and uh, speed limit twenty-five?
Yep.
Any comments? Call roll?
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Olive Stain.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is ordinance O dash twenty-one dash oh-one-two. This is a second and final reading for the annual budget ordinance for the fiscal year beginning on May one, twenty twenty-one and ending on April thirty, twenty twenty-two. Mayor, all council members have uh reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I approve ordinance O dash two-one dash zero-one-two.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? This is going to allow us to do a lot, another eight hundred thousand dollars plus in street work this year, so, forward to that. Uh, call roll?
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is resolution R dash twenty-one dash oh-one-one. This is a resolution authorizing the uh, fire employee pension contribution uh to be made on a pre-tax basis. And while I'm at it, I'll just mention that the next order, or the next resolution also for uh, R dash twenty-one dash oh-one-two, they're both, one is for fire and one is for police. Uh, the city had been approached to um, uh, consider allowing employees to make contributions on a pre-tax, pre-tax basis and uh, after checking into legalities, it was like it was uh doable, so that's what these resolutions are for. And Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance and it is submitted for disposition.
I approve resolution R dash two-one dash zero-one-one.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll?
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is uh, or, uh, res, uh, resolution R dash twenty-one dash oh-one-two. This is a resolution authorizing uh police employees' pension contributions to be made on a pre-tax basis. Mayor, all council members have reviewed this ordinance, uh, uh, resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I approve resolution R dash two-one dash zero-one-two.
Second.
Motion's been second, comments? Call roll?
Councilmember Swanson.
Aye.
Mabry.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
Newman.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Pete, now I'll go to uh, City Manager Reports.
Alright, we have two months worth of financials for January and February, so uh, uh, just to touch on both of these kind of together, so I don't get y'all confused. Um, the very first one for the end of January, we're looking at about a seventy-five percent expense revenue ratio, which is about where we need to be with the budget for this point in time. Uh, if you wanna look at the, our favorite page, the sales tax page, um, for January, obviously still trending up uh at a pretty good rate, I guess I'd say. We're averaging probably five to six thousand dollars per month compared to last year's sales tax, given the situation where we've been in is outstanding, so uh, we keep seeing that sales tax going up. Uh, the next sheet there, which is page nine, uh, you have your hotel motel tax that did also trend up in January significantly, um, but if you look at the next report for February, it trends down, I think it's just a recording timeframe of when some of this stuff gets reported. So again, as I tell Jenica at the chamber meetings, given the situation we went through this last year, the hotel motel's actually doing pretty good compared to what it could be, so those are positive notes. Uh, I always like to touch on the calls for fire and police, um, going from January to February, there's a somewhat of a downward trend in number of calls, so that's always good to see. Um, I guess February's a shorter month, so maybe that's why. So um, those are, those reports are in there if you're curious of looking at those. Um, the other report in there, we do have a fire pension report, we did not have the police one submitted to us from Waterbach yet, so that one is in your report. Um, the last thing I wanna touch on is a public service announcement that uh I received this morning for the water department. Uh, in preparation for the semi-annual water main flushing, the city of Princeton Water Department will be uh starting their citywide hydrant flushing Monday, April twenty-sixth. During this time, customers may experience chlorine odor, cloudy or discolored water in brief periods of low water pressure. Um, and they urge you to use caution around fire hydrants um when they're doing this, so if you have any questions, though, call water, call the water department.
Hey, thank you, Teresa. So the uh, sales tax numbers, you know, we talked a little bit about sales tax and people shopping in Princeton, you know, last year, twenty twenty and starting out twenty twenty-one and we've seen the same thing. Twenty twenty, we had just a surprisingly very, very good sales tax year, uh, especially going through COVID and everything, we just uh, we had one of the best years we've had in a long time, actually, uh, when you look at the, uh, when you look at the previous uh, uh, five or six years, so did really well and again, it started out well this now. And then also, we always talk about our long-term debt, you know, and uh, uh, six years ago, um, we were sitting at about forty-one million dollars in debt and uh, today, we're sitting at about uh twenty-six million, thereabouts. And uh, uh, is that correct? Somewhere near, yeah. So, you know, that's, that's being done because obviously we've taken out a little long-term debt, uh, we've been able to do everything we've been doing without taking out long-term debt and uh, we've been making our payments, so. Those thoughts.
And on that note, in the next four to five years, we're gonna see that drop even significantly more. Uh, and also the sales tax, I guess I've mentioned too, uh, is that the state use tax, which has the online sales, is also increasing significantly for, for obvious reasons, so that's another positive for us.
I've got two proclamations to read tonight. National Bike Month, the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment. Princeton, Illinois, Bureau County's scenic beauty. Throughout the month of May, the residents of Princeton and visitors will experience joys of bicycling by simply getting out and going for a ride. Princeton, Illinois's roads and the Hennepin Canal Trail system attracts bicyclists easier providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits. Creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, throwing the economy of Princeton, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, reducing pollution congestion, and wearing terror streets. Right Illinois, the Princeton Bicycle Pedestrian Commission, the Princeton Area Chamber of Commerce, Princeton Tourism, and Perry Memorial Hospital will be promoting bicycle, bicycling during the month of May, twenty twenty-one. These groups are also promoting bicycle tourism, you're round to attract more visitors, come to our local restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, and cultural and scenic attractions. Therefore, this city of Princeton does hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-one as Bike Month in Princeton, Illinois, and I urge all residents to join us in this special observance. Uh, Arbor Day proclamation. Uh, Arbor Day, uh, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Av- Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Trees, wherever they are planted, are a source, source of joy and spiritual renewal. The procreation of all residents of our city and the beneficial effect of tree planting can be increased, and we can pass on an enduring heritage of beauty and utility to succeeding generations in our city. Therefore, the city of Princeton does hereby proclaim Friday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, as Arbor Day in the city of Princeton, and I urge all citizens to support others to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support our trees, city's urban forestry program, and I observe all citizens to, citizens to observe this day by the planting of one or more trees. And the city of Princeton's going to do its part because we are still working on, uh, as we did a couple years ago, we put trees on the south downtown business district, we want to do that on the, uh, uptown business district as well, uh, department of businesses, so. Uh, so, we have, uh, two council members that will be leaving us after tonight's meeting, and we want to give them, honor them, and, uh, compliment them on their years of service. First of all, for Ray Swanson. Ray has served the city of Princeton and capacity of city commissioner for sixteen years. He had two different stints, twenty oh-three to twenty fifteen, and twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. So appreciation of your many years of dedicated service, Ray. Thank you. And likewise, for Ray Mayberry, Ray has served the council for the last eight years, from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one. Uh, and Ray has seen, you know, out on Main Street, doing all sorts of work, trees and flowers, year after year after year, uh, really helps, uh, you know, the aesthetics of our downtown district and uptown district, obviously benefited greatly from Ray's dedication and his volunteerism, actually, in, uh, in doing the things that he does in the city of Princeton, so, appreciation of your many years of dedicated service.
And my parole officer happy to do a lot of that, so, thank you.
You have that thing around your ankle, I know.
Yeah, we finally, we finally got rid of that. Thank you.
Yeah, you might want to stick those in there so they don't scratch. Okay, so that's all that I have. Do we have any old business tonight? We have any new business?
Mayor, if I could on old business, please?
Yep.
Um, and, and thank you for, uh, recognizing the, the two rays down here at this end. Um, yeah, one of the things that was discussed a couple weeks ago, uh, was the idea of maybe having a, and this is a suggestion that was brought up by myself, but the point would be to have a, a quick meet and greet where the brick and mortar folks could get together and, and hash out what would be something that could be acceptable for an ordinance, and I, I hope that that still could happen. I know you've got two new council members, uh, here tonight, uh, Marty McCransky and, and Mike McCall, and, uh, I'm sure the mayor would be glad to work with you on it. If you guys wanted to, to coordinate something, what's the brick and mortar folks, and sit down and talk to them and say, hey, what can we live with? Because the food trucks are not going to go away, we just got to figure out what is going to be fair as we hear that four-letter word. And, um, I just would encourage, if there's a way that you guys could think about having a, a get-together with the brick and mortar restaurants, and say, what can we live with? And come back to the council with some suggestions, because has anybody been con- has anybody from the city contacted you brick and mortar folks since two weeks ago? So, I, again, I'm one off the council, that's a poor excuse, but I would encourage the two new council members to consider taking on that task, it'd be a great start for you to get your feet wet, if not soaked on a project like this. But I just feel like you brick and mortar folks, you're, as I always say, slug it out three hundred sixty-five days a year, so, and the mayor is, uh, we, we understand what we're trying to do, in many ways, we're trying to protect you, uh, in many ways, with an ordinance, uh, otherwise, I, I just don't want to see a food truck pull right in front of a, a competing business, I just think that would be a terrible thing to have happen, and, and at the same time, I wish I would have asked the, the lady representing the food truck from, uh, Flo's, if by moving down to the state, Jerrison Park and, and being, uh, parked there for the evening, uh, in front of the booth, if that would be detrimental to our business? I don't know, have you heard anything feedback from the food truck operators, if they would have a problem going near Joel versus Main Street, per se?
Well, um, no, actually, I've heard from, uh, several food vendors that, uh, would appreciate that, would, uh, you know, uh, actually like that, would want that. Um, again, the, the whole thing is, obviously, is, uh, you know, the public property issue. You know, we do have spots that we've been looking at at both Rotary Park, Bicyclical Drive, and, uh, Soldiers and Savers Park. And, you know, really, those two areas, and then our Main Street, between Long and the Courthouse Square, those are our public properties where, you know, food trucks would want to set up, so. You know, businesses, you know, as I mentioned earlier, private property, you know, Ray, you have a Thai food truck on, on property that you have, and that's fine, that's, that's totally acceptable. So it is, I, I know Ray Swanson, uh, sure, I, sure, she has, uh, uh, up at the studio, has food trucks on her, her parking lot, um, private property, business district, that's totally acceptable. But it's the public property issue that we're dealing with, and, um, we all know what the, what the issues are, we all, and, you know, we've been through this, I've talked to a lot of brick and mortar restaurant owners, I've talked to a lot of vendors, um, you know, before our last meeting. So, you know, we're, we'll get this, uh, you know, again, we'll get this right, we'll get this straight, it may take some time, just, again, be patient.
It's a tough one, really is.
Yep. And it might be some trial and error as we go through this thing, but, uh, that's how you get things right, you know, if you start out on something, it doesn't work, you, you make a change. Uh, it'll be pretty apparent, I would think, that something would have to be changed if we go forward with something, and we'll make, we'll make do, and we'll do our diligence, and we'll get this right. Be patient. Any other old business? Any new business tonight? Okay, so now we're back to public comment. Anybody have any public comments? Want to step to the mic? What's your name?
Keith Brown. One thing I got, uh, it seems like the brick and mortars are really taking a bashing on Facebook because, uh, they think that we do not want food trucks. That has never been said from any of the businesses. And I know Spoons did a real big bashing, and it was sad to see that go on. But one thing I think we're missing is, have we looked at the safety issue with them, Trailers Park to Barrel Society? Because I, I've had several people come to me and say, they've almost got hit trying to pull out of that corner. And I, I, I don't even try to go that way. I mean, I try to go the other way, just because I got a truck, you go out and you'll, you wait for a red light or take your chances. So I think that really needs to bring along there, we need to do something with that corner, because it's, somebody's not going to get hit, it's just a matter of time, so. That's all I got to say.
I've heard that, uh, I've heard that comment as well, from all parties.
Yeah, if you do something, if you're going to let in, do something with your generators, they make better generators. I had videos sent me this weekend, sat, or Sunday, I think it was, and there's people living upstairs, and across the street, they hear the generator run. They make inverter generators, uh, a lot more quiet than what they're buying. I mean, we have, we have a noise, noise ordinance.
Well, let me ask, uh, I don't, there's not a food vendor here tonight, but I'm just curious, you know, you have these generators that are providing the power for the food trucks, is there, have these been plugged into an outlet?
Sure.
And, and, and you know, limiting the generator, I mean, is that?
That may be better. If you're going to put them in a park, I think the city ought to put poles in and charge them so much for electricity now, the generators, they're going to be two-twenty, you know?
Right.
Better, they got to have an inverter generator, because nobody wants it. Maybe if they're in a park, it won't be so bad, but on Main Street, who wants to listen